I guess we're ready to get started. I will call this meeting. City Council is a work session, call it to order. It's 6:05. Sorry for the delay as we were trying to work out a couple of technical difficulties as we're down in the basement conference room. A place that council does not usually end up having a meeting from and live streaming it to the world, but here we are. So I will note that we have three members of council here. Mr. Purrier is here, Mr. Payne is here, I'm here, and then we have Brian Pinkston. So we have a, we have a quorum physically present at the moment. And Mr. Pinkston is with us by Zoom. Mr. Pinkston, would you tell us where you are and why you are not here?
Yes, I am ill and I met my home. 1108 St. Charles Court. And I will tell you, I'm not sure if COVID's worse or have loxid is worse. The medicine they give to help with it. In any event, I'm recovering from COVID and happy to be able to participate remotely with you all.
All right, so we need a motion for him to participate remotely.
I move that we allow Mr. Pinkston to participate remotely.
Second.
A special on favor say aye. The pass is three, nothing. So now, welcome to the meeting officially. We're having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if that's something that's controllable at our end or at your end, but if you, if you want to speak, I'll have to get you amplified a little bit.
Is this better, Lloyd?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just try not to mumble.
Okay. I will note that Mr. Wade and Vice Mayor Wade will be with us a few minutes late. He told us in advance that when we start scheduling these meetings on nights other than times we've already set up for council meetings, he sometimes has a little conflict that makes him a few minutes late. So he'll be with us, he'll join us shortly. We have set aside a number of work sessions with the idea that there are specific topics that we wanted as council to discuss in ways that we as council had not discussed collectively. And so we have a, we've worked, we worked through three work sessions that were sort of general kind of background, almost urban economics and theory kind of stuff as much as anything else. On tonight's agenda, I think we're talking about the anti-displacement part of the process. And Mr. Freeze, do you want to lead that off?
I can, yes, absolutely. From councillors, I think we, at the last meeting, we touched on these districts a little bit. Would be helpful if I went ahead and did a refresher on those.
Yes, please.
So there's two districts that constitute the anti-displacement districts that we've talked about. One of the, the first of those is the RNA district, the residential core neighborhoods A district. That district pretty closely adheres to the concept that was presented in the comprehensive plan for sensitive community areas. It proposes that the base density on, within that district be one unit per lot that as presented by the planning commission, that the bonus for preserving the existing structure allow two additional units or three total units. And then for affordable dwelling units provided, you get up to six units where all of the bonus units are affordable. The other distinction between this proposed district and the regular residential A district is a reduction in the overall building scale that's allowed via reduction in the building coverage and footprint as well as building width and some, and I believe height. Yes. As far as the mapping of this district, this district was, is mapped, there's a map up here on the wall behind councillor Purrier that shows the area as is recommended by the planning commission. And it's based on, primarily based on our understanding of those areas that have served both, have served the city by providing more affordable housing units over time, workforce housing. All of these districts are areas that were formerly zoned R A, residential A, which is consistent with what was shown in the comprehensive plan where the sensitive community areas were shown over top of residential A, or I'm sorry, at that time, on the land use map, general residential land use areas.
Just to be clear, they have, they have never been zoned R A because we've never had R A. They've been proposed to have been zoned R A.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Then skipping over to the core neighborhoods corridor overlay district. This district is proposed or was proposed for the Preston Avenue and Cherry Avenue corridors. Basically, the commercial districts adjacent to these identified core neighborhoods. And in that district, the base zoning would be proposed at up to three stories. Those are each CX three districts or would be proposed CX three districts. And then the district would allow some amount of additional bonus height. I think the draft says up to four stories on Preston and up to three on Cherry. In order to allow, in exchange for which a developer would provide up to two or provide a minimum of two community benefits based on a list of community benefits that are provided within the district. Those things includes things such as additional affordable housing, affordable units beyond what's required under the base affordable dwelling unit ordinance or providing commercial space for neighborhood serving uses at a more affordable rate. Could include community gathering spaces, community gardens, also including here was the idea of sustainable design features being something that could be included towards basically being able to qualify for that additional height. This, that additional height would also require a special exception permit, which would be granted by city council. Now, in our discussions as far as what the advertised zoning ordinance would show relative to these districts, as we discussed at the last meeting, the text of these districts would be included in that advertised zoning ordinance, but the map would not, the maps would not be advertised in order to allow the city council flexibility to decide where to apply these districts based on your discussions and based on the feedback that you guys get from the community. So any questions on those at this point in time?
Councillors? The, we have gotten a number of emails in the last week from folks who do not live in that area saying, we want this applied to all, all of the city, to all R A, all R B, I guess. And my, my first recollection of this and my first reaction to it was that 30 plus years ago, when we first proposed a form of zoning that was intended to be protective of 10th and Page and Fifeville, at that point, when I was on planning commission, we were calling it an R1A designation. It later became known as R1S. It was intended to be specifically for those neighborhoods that we felt were under most pressure from university for having students move in and so on. And after I got off the planning commission, it got turned into, everybody in the city wanted to have that protection for themselves as well. And that is one of the reasons why we wound up with so much of the city zoned R1 or R1S. Because this, what had been intended to be almost like an overlay district around the university got expanded citywide. Part of the reason we were in the mess we're in right now with so little housing and, and so many lots zoned for single family use only is because we submitted to that, or council and planning commission back then, submitted to the same temptation in 1991 as, is being dangled in front of us in 2023. But I'm curious. You know, we're, we're doing this, we're thinking about doing this because we are specifically concerned that these neighborhoods are most at risk of being topic of gentrification and displacement and so on. And I, I'm assuming that what that really means as a practical matter is that we think that there is the greatest likelihood that the houses would be bought at some available opportunity and turned into student housing or not, not huge 50 unit kind of student housing, but four, six or eight students living there. And under the current zoning, they would be allowed to have even more students living there under the current proposal than we have under the current zoning because of this extension of staying up to three dwelling units per, per residence. And so part of the concern has been, and I think the, the economic analysis we heard a couple of weeks ago confirms this, that the, the greatest incentive, the greatest profit margin for somebody to do this and, and to buy up something and, and basically take it out of the, the market for those who want to simply buy and own in that neighborhood. The greatest incentive for that to happen is going to be in this 10th and Page area, Fifeville area. I can't remember, is it C and D? Are those the category?
They were on the, on that.
Yeah. And, and so this is really an attempt to respond to what our expert economist folks are telling us is this is the most problematic area. And so if there is to be something that we are, are going to do, some reason to treat this area separately, it is because it, that's where the temptation is going to be greatest. And it's where frankly, you know, 10th and Page used to be a distinct neighborhood that extended up to 12th and 13th. And now it's what we would call 10th and Page just doesn't extend. I mean, in terms of the black community that had been living there for generations, they're not there on 13th Street anymore, 12th Street, really much anymore, awful lot of students in there. So there's a very specific neighborhood preservation component to, to this effort that I think, I mean, neighborhood preservation is, is one of the things that zoning ordinances are intended for. I think we, we need to understand that and be willing to acknowledge that.
And I would, I would just add to that, my thinking is in agreement, in addition to that, the concern of, I think the discussion on both ends has been very focused on homeowners and a question of renters. If the, the price at which an outside investor is willing to purchase a property goes up by, or if you saw 50% increase in the valuation of that land and you're a renter, you're not going to gain anything from that increase in value and you may just get screwed. So in addition to neighborhood, well, I mean, I guess it's maybe neighborhood preservation away as well. But you know, I also think of our, you know, the couple existing remaining mobile home parks we have in area like the Meadows as that concern about displacement of specifically renters who aren't using a voucher or any subsidy. Yeah.
With the increase in taxes being causing increase in rent. Because my taxes have gone up in the home that I own, but I rented in order for me to continue to be able to do that and not sell, then the people that are in my unit, their rent will go up, even though the renters may have vouchers. At some point, the vouchers may not cover, not that all vouchers cover 100%, but if I have a voucher and I'm now paying, I don't know, a hundred dollars a month as, as an example, but because my property taxes have gone up, my real estate taxes have gone up as the owner of the home and I have to have my rent go up, the voucher may still cover whatever it covers, but the additional monies I may not be able to afford, so consequently I become displaced. And I think that that is a concern from people that we've heard as well.
And you'd say the sort of the countervailing concern that I've heard from some folks in the neighborhood is basically what you are proposing to do will limit my ability to profit from appreciation in my, in the value of my house. And you know, mama had lived there for 50 years and she died and none of the kids want to live there anymore. They want to sell the house. Why shouldn't they be able to maximize their, their profit? Their generational wealth is embodied in that house and you're saying we can't, we can't access that. And that, for some folks, that would seem to be just as much a racial issue as the, the composition of the neighborhood. And so, and I'm, I'll say this, it's, a lot of black people have been making that same kind of comment to me. So I'm, I frankly am torn about how, how to reconcile or whether even to try to reconcile those two views. Because I, I've represented a number of folks who have written the wills for the mother who died and then the house had to get sold because none of the kids wanted to be there. And I, I understand the problems that they're, they're facing and their desire to, to be able to maximize their own, their own wealth and that they don't, in many cases, they don't feel it's fair that they are having to sacrifice for somebody else in that respect.
Although, I definitely don't disagree at all with that tension, but the RNA designation is still an increase in the buy right development rights over the existing conditions. And you know, you're still accessing wealth, both from that change in the existing conditions in terms of increase in assessments. But obviously, obviously true. You know, if you had an RC designation for, as just an example, that would be greater than RNA in terms of your, your value increase, so acknowledge that.
Brian, got any thoughts?
Just a few, yeah. So James, this is what we're looking at here, what's in your memo is it matches what was in the, the handout that you gave us the other day, I, I guess, the, the addition, the modification, the amendment to the zoning text that has the, the figures for the RNA is what you described earlier in your, is what's in the memo. I'm just asking for confirmation that that is true.
I'm not sure I caught the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I caught the question.
Yeah. In, in other words, the, the documentation we were given a few days, a couple of weeks ago at this point that had the new text for RNA with the new figures and sketches and, and all of that text. That matches what you described earlier in your verbal discussion as well as in the memo that we've received.
Yes, yes, it does. And I'll, I'll note, one, one of the places where there was a discrepancy, what you guys received earlier was in the, in the copy of the RNA text that was submitted as part of the resolution of the planning commission, there was an inaccuracy. It noted that for existing, for the existing building bonus, it, it allowed, it said a maximum number of units of two, but the planning commission's recommendation was actually for three. That the, the preservation of the existing building would basically allow you to do two additional units on top of preserving that existing one. So that, that is, I want to make sure it's noted that that was, that's a different, that was, that's different. That was an error in the resolution version of that packet.
Okay. In terms of the overall, I mean, I'm looking here at the map of the, it's remarkable the range of the areas that would, would need the RNA overlay. Runs all the way from down on Ridge Street to up to Rose Hill. Even across Ridge McIntyre, a few units over there. So it, it, it's actually a broader swath of the city than I had originally thought it would be. So that's interesting to me.
Somehow.
Are y'all able to hear me okay?
So if we, if we, he can hear us if we ask him. Remi, is there a way we can turn up the volume?
Let me check on it real quick.
He may just be using the TV volume, which gives that remote mic. The TV volume, speakers of the TV will have an effect.
Vice Mayor Wade has arrived. Do you have the answer technologically, how we can turn up the volume?
Yes. Turn it up.
All right. Sorry to interrupt you there, but we were, we were not hearing you, so.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Fantastic. Yeah, I think the bottom line is for me, just to sort of cut to the chase is I, I feel like this has really been probably the most difficult issue conceptually to try to work through. And I feel like there were lots of people who gave lots of helpful input, both through the hack and with the planning commission. And I feel like, and with your staff as well, James, that you all came up with what you thought was a good compromise. It's, it's not perfect. There's definitely going to be the trade off that was mentioned between, you know, whether a person is able to fully take advantage of, you know, selling out their equity where they are now versus the fact that if we aren't careful, all of these neighborhoods will just be eroded by gentrification. For me, I think that I, I want to err, if that's the right word, on the side at this point, at least in time of minimizing the risk of gentrification, knowing that, that causes other problems. So I, I support the RNA, I understand the reason for it. I think it's a creative solution. I think that lots of people have thought about this for a long time and have had lots of really good conversations about it. And I think this is an example of the, the process being responsive to those, to those needs. I would say the same thing about the, the corridors as well for Preston and Cherry. The only, the only change I would make for the corridors is I think it needs to go down to, on, at least to Reed's on Preston. Not stop at the, not stop at the, at the railroad. Maybe we go all the way down to, I'm not sure, the Wendy's or wherever down there. But I think it should go a little further. But I think that, you know, what's being proposed for the corridors is responsive to, to the concerns that were brought to us about the dairy market project. When we had all of the people show up at our planning commission meeting back in August, I think at this point, or September. There again, some creativity. I think councillor Payne played a big part in that in terms of helping us think through options about, you know, creative ways to, to get some density, but not let those areas be overrun by luxury student housing. So again, both of these, I understand the concept. I understand the details and I am in support of them both. Again, I think they reflect a lot of thoughtful collaboration with a, a range of different folks and to me represent the fact that this process has tried to be and is responsive to people's concerns. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Folks got other? Vice Mayor Wade, we're discussing the RNA and, and the corridor issues associated with that. Any thoughts?
I guess, you know, I guess it's a comment is that I just want to be sure because this is the, the sensitive areas of neighborhoods, what I am most concerned about. Is that we're going through all of this, that it will have the desired outcome. You know, and I know we can't control the market, you know, what people would do. But man, if we go through all of this and, and we still lose our neighborhood, it just would really be tough. You know, and I know it's hard to say, you know, someone comes to someone and say, we're going to give you a million dollars for your profits. No ordinance or, or, you know, in the world that will prevent something like that. But just large scale, neighborhood wise, if, you know, if these plans, and I believe that it will. But what I, and this, this weekend, today is only Wednesday and I didn't meet with anyone today. I already met with like a half dozen people with individual meetings of a coffee or breakfast to express their concern about this. And what they all have said is that, you know, is this going to give us what we want? And I said, I believe that it does. But I think that that is one of those that feelings that a lot of people in the community has is that, you know, will this give us what we want? So, you know, it's kind of a, you know, a comment as we kind of go through, go through this, this last kind of stages, some, some thought, so.
So one of the, the questions that I had, and it relates to the corridors. I had a separate sort of thing I wanted to go for us to be talking about that relates to this. That's the question of how we deal with transition from one zone to another. And when the discussion of the corridors, particularly along Preston Avenue first came up, it had to do with the controversy about the expansion of Dairy Market and so our Dairy Central. And in particular, that sense of how the transition would be made. And I confess, I don't really understand what that transition is going to end up looking like under the new ordinance. Can you, Mr. Freeze, sort of run us through some?
Yeah, I can.
I think that bears on this issue.
Sure. Well, I will say that one of the things a special exception process does give you the opportunity to do is address that transition directly and, and say that on a particular project, that transition might be found to be insufficient. But let's, just if we look at the base of what the zoning calls for, in each instance where you have a higher intensity district adjacent to a lower intensity district, whether they are but along property lines or but across the street, there is, there is a set of rules that basically give you a standardized transition. And those transitions are in the form of both landscaping, increased setback requirements, and then finally a step back requirement where above a certain height, a building has to step back. Those rules are slightly different depending on whether your, your transition is occurring across the street as opposed to across a property line, but that's the, the basic concept of how those are proposed to work.
So folks in this corridor may well have to deal with those transition rules on one side of them, at least. In addition to having to, to deal with whatever other conditions we may want to require them to, to meet in order to get certain advantages.
Yeah. The, I mean, if you take the full host, I mean, there's a lot of requirements that are, that are being put in place. Again, you know, our effort is to move a lot of those things we might discuss in a discretionary permit into the base zoning ordinance. So the most significantly, we've got the affordable housing requirement as a base requirement. Every project that exceeds nine units has to meet. But there's, there's requirements for landscaping, tree canopy, streetscape, pedestrian walkability, pedestrian passages through developments. There's just a lot that would come into play, particularly on a corridor like Preston, where you have larger parcels that have been assembled and are available for development. We do have, I mean, if it's helpful, I believe Code Studio is listening in to the conversation. It could be brought in if there's more detailed questions about the transitions, they can certainly. It could be brought in if there's more detailed questions about the transitions, they can certainly answer those in better detail than I can.
A lot of the questions, Michael, were things that you have been raising. How do you feel about the, the current situation with the recommendation for the corridors? And the, the step backs and transitions and so on?
Um, I think the proposal addresses it in the areas where it's been defined as. I think it's an approach that seems as a framework reasonable to me. At a certain point, I think, you know, you, uh, there's a building of a certain height, you know, if it's eight stories and it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood, you can have step backs and tree plantings. It's still going to be a change to the existing condition that you just can't get around. Um, I guess, I don't know. I mean, I think the framework makes sense and the areas where it works, I think it's reasonable, especially in the context of us going to revisit our next comprehensive plan in about two years. Um, but I'll still admit, I, I kind of wrestle with it. The, the politics aside, just thinking about it, I still think about um, you know, areas in the city in these mixed use corridors that are still going to go to eight, 10 stories by right. And you look at the existing businesses there. Um, I just have a hard time seeing how it's not just going to result in the fabric of the small business community fundamentally changing. Um, in some areas, that may be fine. I understand there's the idea to move away from discretionary processes and there's a trade off in terms of costs there. Um, but there's still part of me that just wonders beyond even what's outlined, what is the great fear that there's a special use permit or equivalent to that in some areas where you're talking about a change to 10 stories or eight stories where the existing conditions may be like 35 feet by right. And there's also unlimited density with that. I mean, I, I've just got to imagine the change in the value of that parcel is going to go up by like a, some factor of like three, four times X. And again, I mean, there's areas where that may, we may want that, but I still just wonder, you know, what kind of change is that going to look like for the fabric of existing businesses and neighborhoods? Um, and how aware are people in that? I mean, like, for example, I mean, Reed's Market is not in this current um, outline of the, the corridor overlay. My understanding now is they do own their land, but even still, if you're talking about a site like that going to like eight stories by right with unlimited density, how, how would we not expect that business to just be gone? And again, maybe that's what we want, but I don't know how widespread the awareness of that is or the discussion of the trade offs are in um, some of these neighborhoods or how deeply we've even thought about it. And I also think the research in terms of affordability for mixed use corridors is different than research and changes in residential areas in terms of there's at least some research to indicate that there's a small regional benefit to reducing uh, the cost of housing, but it may still increase gentrification within that immediate neighborhood. Um, and that's a difficult tension. So I don't know how well that really answers your question, but.
Yeah, I understand, you know, you know, what, you know, your concern with that. Oh, Michael, I'm trying to think, you know, I'm sure that there is a way that there, you know, because we're talking about it for kind of some existing use. Because I think we all, you know, like places like Reed, um, as long as they want to be there, we don't want, you know, down the road that if that, the owners of it or places similar, that if they want to sell or do something, they'd be allowed to, you know, so. Um, and um, but I'm, I'm saying that, that the pressure just may be too great. You know, um, if it's zone heavy and, um, you know, just.
But if, if you've got special use permits, I mean, you can still get there, but it's adding a level of kind of review to what conditions are. Um, and maybe that increases the overall cost of a project by seven percent, but.
But even if, but even if they own the land, Michael, I think I hear you saying, and if I don't hear you saying it, tell me. But I think what you're saying is even if they own the land, based on what is currently being proposed, we wouldn't want them to feel that they have to sell because of what's going up around them. Or what goes up around them makes their business no longer viable. What one are you saying? Or both?
Or even more valuable, because I think most retail places would say, well, you know, we got hundreds of thousands more foot traffic or people living near us, they, they may shop here.
Okay.
Well, I, my concern would be, is that just a theoretical example? If they, and if they didn't own, if there's any business that doesn't own their land, which is a substantial amount of the small business community.
Right.
They're going to have no, their owner decides to sell because your buy right allowance went up five stories and now there's unlimited density that increased the value of that parcel
Okay.
five times. But what's their situation? Reed's owns it, but again, like that parcel going to eight stories by right with unlimited density. What is the value increase of that parcel overnight? What is that impact on their um, realistic taxes? And at what point do they say like, yeah, you know, we're just, we're just going to sell, you know?
I see.
We can't even maintain the real estate taxes.
Okay.
Well, I, I, first off, I think it would be important to actually clarify how real estate taxes are calculated, right? My understanding is for commercial properties, based on the rent.
The rent, you say?
Right.
Oh.
But I would want to go and talk to the, talk to the assessor about how that calculation has arrived at. But I, I, I just, I, I, it's been noted before, but I want to, I want to focus on, on this for a second. We can't through zoning control what stores or retailers are located in these properties.
Correct.
The, the, the retailers, the individuals, property owners can make the decision to move out or stay on their own. And we can't, we can't mandate that they stay. So.
And we can't mandate that Reed's continue to be a grocery store instead of a furniture store.
Right. Well, let's, you know, perhaps get off of that as a specific example, although I think it's useful to think about. Is it? I, shouldn't we have to acknowledge if you're talking about changing a business, the existing zoning is say 35 feet by right and there's a density limit and you change that to 10 stories with unlimited density, you're going to see a fundamental change in the type of business that comes in in the real estate market in that area. And again, maybe we want to do it, but I mean, I just really struggle to see how that's not a fundamental change to even the, the economics of investment in that area. And then what type of business is likely to come in? I think there's a completely different market for a type of business that comes in on the bottom floor of a mixed use development that's eight or 10 stories. That's a very different market than, you know.
Michael? Okay, I, I'm sorry, could I ask a quick question? Can you hear me?
Yep.
So you, you're referring not just to the area at Reed's, but for example, East High Street or other, uh, others of these NX or CX um, designations throughout the city? Your, your concerns are for those as well, not just specifically in, in this area? You're making the, the broader point?
Broader and just trying, you know, even still thinking through it myself, you know, what is, what is even the trade off in some areas of still having special exception, special use permit? Um, especially as we see, you know, what the impact is over the next two years. Um, because I just see a high degree of uncertainty um, in terms of um, what it's going to look like in the fabric of existing, you know, businesses and, and commercial areas. Um, again, particularly when you're talking about a change as, as significant as removing a density restriction and going to eight or 10 stories by right when the existing condition may be, again, 35, 40 feet. I mean, again, it's fundamental change.
The existing, it is. Same condition of the, the existing built condition or the exist, the existing zoning?
Uh, existing zoning.
Because I, I think it's important to acknowledge that pretty much as soon as you go to new construction, you're, 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 you are increasing, you're likely to be increasing those commercial rents. Right? So it's, it's kind of virtually, at the point of redevelopment, there's a, there's a saying attributed to Jim Jacobs, right, that says, new ideas of old buildings. And what she's basically getting at is entrepreneurial activity seeks out old buildings because that's where lower rents are. Right? So that, so, uh, but our, our objective with these by, by zoning a wider area for, for, for higher intensity use, we aren't concentrating the redevelopment activity. We're, we're spreading out the potential for it. So, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to.
Would it be conceptually, I mean, is it even conceptually wrong to consider? You have your comprehensive plan, you know, laying out, you know, future land use map in some of these areas. I mean, in my mind, I'm, it's a tension, but I'm not even sure it's, would be conceptually inaccurate to say if you're having a special use permit that can still go up to eight, 10 stories with unlimited density. It's still a zoning change, it's just introducing an element of uh, discretionary decision where people who are in that area have a voice. And I understand there's the concern that increases cost and there's a concern that politically council may just never prove anything and understand politics change quickly, but I just look at our recent history of special use rezoning permits. That's, we're not in the world of the nineties where absolutely nothing gets approved, but. So that was something.
I'm sorry, I, I, I think that's worth responding to. I saw Lee raising a hand and if, if it's up, if council is willing, I'd be happy to let Lee, Lee respond to that. Lee?
Hmm, I actually just got a quick question for Councilmember Payne because I, I think this is a really tough topic that you guys are tackling here. But would you consider Councilmember Payne starting the requirement for SUP at something like more than five stories? For example, where you might believe that you would get the right outcome on a site, you know, at three stories or five stories, but you're quite concerned about the more radical change of seven, eight, 10 stories. Um, if, if, if that were a possibility, I think a couple of things would be true. One, the ability to pay the freight, if you will, of sticking through the, the, the process of a special use permit is easier when the change is more substantial. Um, and it might encourage some people to stay at those more moderate level heights that choose not to go through the SUP process. We might be able to, to, to begin to craft a solution that allows a little of both to occur. I just offer that up.
Sort of incentivizing the three to five story building, a little bit less incentive for the above five story building.
Asking more of the taller building because it is less in keeping with the existing scale of the surrounding area. Yes, I think that would be a, a, a fair process.
I think that framework kind of gets at my concern. It's what we've, is outlined just in certain areas. My concern is really less even the built environment than just my uncertainty of a certain level of the value increase of the parcel. Um, there's just a lot of uncertainty in my mind. What the impact is that going to be in our 10 and a half square miles, the, the, the business community in those areas? And um, even just, you know, what is the mix going to be of a hotel built versus office space versus apartments? I mean, in my mind, there's uncertainty as, you know, you go up to eight, 10 stories by right. How much of that is office use? And how much of that do we even want to see in some of these areas? It's just, it's uh, uncertainty in my mind.
So, um, Michael, me, you know, in my mind, we kind of find solutions and I'm trying to figure out what would make you feel make this, you know, acceptable to you, or maybe it's not, but would, would, you know, I think with Lee said, was something like that to a certain degree or um, you know, I'm, what would you like to, to see? Because there's going to be some uncertainty in all of this, you know? Um, what, what, what would you, if you were writing uh, uh, your own zoning ordinance, what would it look like? What would it say for this particular thing?
Well, part of my difficulty is I don't know that answer. Um, I think, I think the framework of the corridors that we're, that's in front of us tonight addresses the concern I have for where it is. The question in my mind, are there areas where that kind of general framework, you would want to expand it beyond where we've outlined it? Um, I think in general, what Lee brought up is that idea kind of gets at um, addresses the tension I have, but I, I don't know. I mean, I'm still not sure, because the, the, the trade offs, um, James and others have discussed are, are also real. Um, and where, you know, we land on that in the, in the context we're visiting in this two years, in two years. I guess I'm just.
Yeah, I wonder, Michael, could we, could we just see how things go over the next two years and if we need to craft a solution then? I mean, I feel like um, you know, the court, the two corridors that we're speaking about tonight, we specifically made this request because we were concerned about displacement of people really in, in homes, residences, although I guess we're also concerned about displacement of neighborhood businesses. So I can see that connection. But in other places, and the only other place that kind of comes to mind is, is the East High uh, corridor there. Um, I mean, when the flum was worked through a couple of years ago, was there, and, and most of the conversation has been around the impact to residential neighborhoods, but was there discussion then about um, you know, the impact to commercial, the commercial side of things? Because I, I have a little uh, I don't know, I, I'm more interested in this.
There was no discussion of commercial and I don't think we really even discussed mixed use corridors at all. And it's long since gone, but the idea then that the future land use map was a long term maximum build out and that the immediate zoning change didn't need to necessarily go to what the future land use map was. But we did not discuss, in my memory, commercial or mixed use corridors. It was all residential.
Okay. And obviously they have been maxed out. All right, I'm assuming they have, that, that's my read of it.
Well, so I, I want to talk in, in particular about the Preston Avenue corridor because in the original, I shouldn't say the original, the, I guess it was the August draft, the Preston Avenue corridor between 10th Street and the railroad tracks was all various shades of CX five and CX eight. And then uh, the map that was proposed on October 13th basically took everything within that corridor and dropped it back to CX three. And then there was a recommended, recommendation on October 18th that basically kept that uh, as CX three except for the area that is bounded by the uh, the railroad tracks across Preston Avenue. And then by the railroad spur that goes down by the county office building. And then one, one lot in each direction. So that would basically mean uh, on one side Boto's, on the other side, it would mean uh, Reed's and the Random Road Brewery, basically. Uh, and those particular areas under the current version of things have reverted to CX eight. Uh, and so one of the questions that I guess we, we ought to talk about is whether, whether we like the original version of CX five and CX eight? Whether we like the intermediate version of CX three or whether we like the uh, the, the versions? In fact, I'll just point out that, that this is uh, this is Reed's and this is Boto's. So that's Reed's and that's Boto's. See, there it goes from CX three to CX eight. In the original. In the original design, they were both CX eight as well.
Yeah, I definitely prefer the middle, the middle one there, the intermediate, the one that's more extensive. And and to be clear, that that the middle one is is based on the idea of incorporating the corridor overlay. So it that's that's what that's doing.
Well, I remember at the planning commission meeting on October 18th, discussion of sort of specifically, are we trying to protect Reed's? Are we trying to protect Boto's? And I didn't hear an actual everybody going around the table and saying, okay, four to two, we're deciding we're protecting Reed's and Boto's. But we still, we end up with that recommendation. Because that's that's really the only difference between the middle version and the one on the right.
So and and I believe the difference differentiation was the planning commission was focused on adjacency to the neighborhoods and and they noted that that you would.
The neighborhood adjacent.
Right. But I I mean, if you if you go back to the intention of this corridor overlay, it's really focused on on a on these as the commercial corridors that serve these adjacent neighborhoods with certain amenities. Retail stores, you know, we talked about, we've talked about grocery stores, laundromats. I don't know why I keep adding at that. That's what I always come up with, but but there being, there being those types of amenities and that doesn't necessarily refer to adjacency, refers to these are the accessible, this is this is the accessible corridor that that provides these services to these populations and that's what we're trying to protect, restore, or or create opportunities for.
And 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 all will, I'm sorry, will reduce the need for people to get in their car and drive and, you know.
And for what it's worth, I was just looking at the use chart and pages three dash four through three dash seven. And there is almost no difference between CX three and CX eight in terms of the uses permitted. It's purely a matter of intensity. I see it a little bit of a difference in that CX eight could have a hospital by a special use permit, but a CX three could not. You could have an animal care facility outdoors in a CX eight, but not in a CX three. You know, there are a few things like that, but only a very few. So it really is just a question of of height and intensity more than anything else.
If we could circle back just a second. In terms of Michael's earlier questions about the CX zones in general, I mean, that's I guess my my first question is. I mean, the topic of this meeting was really on the RNA and then these two particular corridors. And then this more broad, this broader topic that that Michael brought up, which I think is an important one about the commercial corridors in general. I'm wondering, um, can we at least get some agreement on the, you know, sort of the original thing we were talking about? RNA and then these two commercial corridors and then I see where we land on, you know, perhaps next steps for the for the commercial, just more. I I say commercial corridors, but generally, I mean, does that need to be another another meeting or is it something we could explore tonight?
Well, I I think you make a good point in one respect. Let maybe it'd be a good idea to try to close the book on a chapter before we move on to the next chapter, so at least we get a sense of a decision having been made.
Yes.
How do folks feel about the RNA? I I had a general sense that people were okay with with the way it's been recommended to us. But I don't want to speak for everybody.
I'm comfortable with it.
Me too.
I'm good with RNA. I would note the areas where it is are is a smaller geographic area than the sensitive, original sensitive communities overlay in the comprehensive plan. I'm good with the framework. I think it could be extended to existing mobile home park scenario like the Meadows.
Okay, well, let's just take the definitions for now and then we can step next to the question of whether there are specific concerns to have about the key areas. Counselor Prier, you okay with it? Okay, it sounds like we have a consensus then behind the text of RNA. And then the the next question that Michael was raising was about where. And he correctly notes that we had in an earlier draft had a a suggestion of what's sometimes been called sensitive areas or however we want to characterize it. But basically being areas that we thought were most likely to be the subject of gentrification slash displacement. And one of the things I I I'm assuming, although I I probably shouldn't assume this, but Mr. Freeze, you can tell me if I've if I'm assuming correctly, that one of the reasons why the areas up around the Meadows are not included here is that they were not included in the areas that on the economic analysis seemed most likely to change.
The analysis by RKG included everything that was designated. Sensitive community included the Meadows. When you see that designation C slash D, C was everything that's close to downtown, Ridge, Rose Hill, Tenth and Page, Fifeville, et cetera, University in downtown. The Meadows was D. It was treated separately, but the finding was largely the same. The differentiation, we didn't, we didn't include the Meadows because granted, we haven't had extensive conversations with anyone, but the conversations we've had with folks from that neighborhood is that they were not interested at that time, when we were just talking about sensitive communities. The indication I got was we don't want to be included in this sensitive communities designation. Now, I will not claim that we talked to an extensive number of people. We held a meeting out in that neighborhood, but only three people showed up.
Well, and I.
But why wouldn't they want to be included? What would that, what was their reasoning?
Well, the primary reason is that they said they don't, the the statement from the folks that were in the room was that they don't, they aren't seeing the same development pressure that's happening at Tenth and Page. They're not seeing turnover in in properties and I don't think they wanted to see potential reduction in that.
But that could change. And so if they're not in the mix and it changes, then they're on the outside looking in. Right? Am I, am I wrong? Am I right? I mean, yes, Mr. Planning Commissioner, I am right.
Yes, ma'am.
One of my thoughts, and I don't know if this is, I mean, I I've had, I've had more conversations with people from Tenth and Page and Fifeville than I have with the people from
Correct.
from the Meadows. And partly, my sense is that a lot of the people who are renters up there in the Meadows are more transient. I think that that is an accurate assumption. And if so, they probably have less interest in the neighborhood as a as a unit. Certainly, the people who were the 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 folks who were most vociferous in talking to me about in Tenth and Page were the owners of places there rather than the tenants, but I heard a lot from the tenants through various other groups who were representing the tenants. I I don't have a clear sense on on what the what the feeling of people in the Meadows was.
And I think, you know, the old apartment buildings in the Meadows or, you know, some of the mobile home parks, mobile home parks. I don't think we've heard from anyone who lives there. I doubt we ever will unless we go canvass there ourselves. But I know they probably don't want their lot sold to someone who redevelops it as a five story mixed use building. And they lose their housing and never live here again.
So what do you, given what you're saying, Michael, which makes perfect sense. I don't want my land swept up, but even though I'm renting the land, what is it that could be done that they could be included? Or is there nothing at this point then could be done and you have to go back and look at it at another point in time?
Is that, is that what you're asking?
I mean, is now the time for them to be included or do you just say, well, you know what, in 18 or 24 months, we go back and we put them in the mix?
We could.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm asking. I don't know. I'm not a planner.
The the disadvantage of doing it sort of the the piecemeal fashion is that something may change, somebody may do something different in the next 18 to 24 months. If we think that that's a valid concern, a valid problem, then it might be.
Need to address it now. Okay.
I would raise that with the mobile home parks in particular, if we were to do it, and then the RNA district, as we've discussed, is that would actually be a lower density than they currently have today. In terms of how those lots are zoned.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to understand a little more, I guess, going back. I I saw I see sort of the historical and cultural and economic rationale for you know, what I'm looking at on my screen here, uh, which is in the memo of all the lots, the parcels that y'all are now including. This is on page. City of Charles zoning maps draft October 2023. I don't know if y'all can pull that up on your screen. In any event, I I see how these connect to the notion of a sensitive community. A lot of these, you know, in terms of the the census tracts, the historical development. I I understand why these would belong to a sensitive community type scenario. I don't see how that translates to the Meadows. The Meadows, I take it was built much later, was sort of adopted into the city, I guess, at some point.
It was annexed in about sixty one or sixty two, something like that.
So I I guess at some point, I just, I worry if we we continue to carve things up, um, we're going to get to the point where things have a real sort of ad hoc. Or at least we run the risk of an ad hoc kind of approach to this. Again, the the sensitive communities that we have here, it's a high BIPOC area, you know, a lot of these places were have already experienced a lot of impact from the university. You know, Tenth and Page, Ridge, Fifeville. That all this makes sense, but I I'm struggling to see you know, why the Meadows or a mobile home park fit with that same criteria.
My thinking is if the goal is to try to displant, prevent displacement of renters and the ideal would be if you could find specific parcels that have a high percentage of low income renters with no subsidy. My concern is again, you know, mobile home park, you allow, you change the zoning to allow unlimited density, five stories with the height bonus. If that increases the value of the parcel by a hundred percent and that owner sells it. All those people are screwed and they're never going to live here again and we never heard from them. We never will, but you just got rid of that community and that housing type and we say, oops, and you know, but they'll probably never even vote, so.
Well, I I would like to suggest, I would like to suggest that we're talking about having a specific meeting in the next couple of weeks to talk about frankly, details on the zoning map. But we can identify this question of the Meadows and whether they ought to be designated as part of the what are we calling it now? Anti-displacement zone.
Are there other places in the city that might, I mean, again, I hear, hear what you're saying, Michael. I'm just wondering, maybe there are other places that might have a similar. You know, meet the similar.
Well, and and one of the things, one of the things I was going to say at sort of at the end of the meeting was to kind of tee up this notion that we would have a meeting that would be discussing individual aspects of the zoning map. Uh, and one of the things I was going to do is ask everybody to give not necessarily tonight, but in the next day or two, a list to Mr. Freeze of any particular areas. Parcels, streets, blocks, that we want to talk about on a on an individual basis. And I would, perhaps we should defer further discussion of the specifics of the Meadows inclusion in the anti-displacement zone to that time. I just think, but if we have a general consensus, we apparently have consensus around the language. We have consensus, it would appear, at least as to Tenth and Page and Fifeville. Is that fair to say, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. And so the the next question of including the Meadows, that's something that we can take up when we have that further discussion in a couple of weeks. That seems appropriate, everybody. I'd like to try to get through the the few things that we know we had said we wanted to accomplish. And 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 sort of closing a chapter and moving on to the next chapter so that we come to the end of the meeting and Mr. Freeze knows what he's being asked to do for the next meeting.
Poor Mr. Freeze.
Hey, it's what he gets paid the big bucks for.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, so why don't we, hearing no objection to that proposal, let's figure we'll talk more about the Meadows in a in a week or two. Then that gets to the question of are we comfortable with the text within the broad outlines of the corridors, not asking about specific parcels right now, but just the the broad outlines of of what's what's being discussed.
And again, you're going back to the Preston and Cherry corridors.
Right, those two corridors and the various definitions, like the criteria for why you ought to be allowed to get certain bonuses and that kind of thing.
I'm good with them.
Okay.
The text, yes.
Yeah, text.
Yes.
Text, yes.
All right, so we've got that agreed to. Do we want to, i- i- if we can come to an agreement without a whole lot of difficulty this evening, fine, if not, we can put it off till the next meeting, but are, how are people feeling about proposals specifically for for Preston Avenue? And we had the three choices. The middle choice was everything was CX three. The right hand choice was taking the parcels that are basically Reed's and the gas station across the street and I guess Brown's Cleaners and Boto's. And those would get, would be allowed to go up to CX eight. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ms. Creasy. So we're, we're really just talking about these parcels, two parcels here, two parcels here.
Can someone please point out where Harris is? I'm having a hard time seeing it.
Uh, Harris is right here.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to. It's where Boto's is.
Yeah.
This is, is, this is the brown.
Yeah.
Between the CX three, whatever color, the red line, that little white space is Harris, right?
If you see Preston, let's look at the middle one. Preston Avenue runs up through the the middle of the of the corridor. And then there is the, uh, the railroad tracks are the thickest white area that's coming from east to west. And then the the one between that and the bottom is Harris.
Yeah, okay. I still prefer that one, the October 13th one.
Middle one, okay.
Like the 13th one over the 18th one? Is that what he said?
Yes.
Yes.
How do the rest of you all feel about it?
Likewise, the 13th, my recollection is the planning commission said they changed it because the bridge where the railroad is, they considered it to be a geog- because the bridge where the railroad is, they consider it to be a geographic barrier that separated it. But I think for folks living in the neighborhood or walking there, I'm not really sure how much that bridge has experienced as a fundamental change to the neighborhood.
I mean, I'm fine with the, the planning commission, the eighteenth, um, but if the majority goes with the thirteenth, um, I mean, I'm, I'm in that area all the time. Um, it's, the railroad is definitely not a, a barrier. It is if you are, you know, uh, a wheelchair or something like that, and that's one of the persons I've met with this week. So it is in some sense, but I'm fine with the eighteenth, but I'm not sure of it. We have to have a separate discussion.
I can, I can go either way. I think the thirteenth addresses what Michael was talking about earlier. Am I right, Michael, about the extension? Remember you said beyond the railroad tracks down?
Yes, it's, yes, to me, it addresses it.
The thirteenth addresses what your concern was earlier, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And basically whether the parcels were photos or reeds are, do we want them to be eight stories by right with no density limit? And you could build office uses, not necessarily in housing, so.
As opposed to the three stories?
Right, five, five, yeah.
Yeah, the three to five, I don't know, that eight seems to be an awful lot to me. However, I'm not a planning commissioner, and I presume they did the eighteenth for a reason. I don't know.
Well, okay, we're, we're undecided at this point, but let's revisit that when, when we come back to individual, uh, individual plots. Are there related issues pertaining to displacement? That was the advertised topic for this evening.
Um, maybe I'll side, I gotta side more question more broadly. I've got the two districts, that's, that's our.
Yeah.
If I might just interject, and we need to know whether you want us to advertise the smaller district as opposed to the large one.
I think we already decided to advertise the, not advertise maps for either. That was where the decision was.
Make sure we're still there.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, good, thanks.
Maintaining maximum flexibility.
All right.
Ah, yeah.
That's our point. That's number one. No matter what else we do, that's always one. Everything else is two and damn. Okay?
Okay.
We're good.
There you go, all right.
Thanks.
So are there, I, I'm hearing no other topics related to displacement in particular. Are there, are there other topics that we can? I mean, that, that was the one that was most advertised for this evening. Are there other things that we can be talking about profitably right now? Ms. Freeze, what would, what would be helpful to you?
Well, so it would seem, a proposal was put on the table to consider, uh, SUP requirement over five stories. And I'm, I'm presuming that would be on a broader scale than just these corridors we've just been talking about. I, I'm curious about.
No, let's talk about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I will say that we have, uh, a couple of different tensions here. One tension is that we know that every time we end up talking about SUPs, it slows the process down and causes more expense for applicant, uh, for applicants. Uh, on the other hand, it also gives the, the government, the planners, more control over the process. Uh, and the idea is that we may not be able to so finely tune our zoning ordinance that we can, we can say with certainty which, which results we would always find to be acceptable. The, so, so I guess the, one of the questions I've had is whether there is a way to have what I would call an SUP light, where maybe you don't have to go through all of the engineering stuff or whatever is, is necessary to, or at least desirable. I know one of, that's been one of the complaints is a lot of times, uh, SUP applicants have not done all of the detailed engineering work. Largely, and I understand the reasoning, that they don't want to spend the money, uh, on that kind of thing until they have an idea as to whether the concept is going to be acceptable to council and the planning commission. Um, but i- is there a way to say for certain kinds of projects, no, you don't have to do all that stuff before you come to us with an SUP?
Certainly, it's the question of what, what, what constitutes a packet, an application packet, right? And, um, certainly seeing, uh, SUP packets that rely on more conceptual drawings. Now, the, the, what a developer is gonna say is that there's a certain amount of that work they have to do anyway because they gotta make sure they don't get permission for something that then turns out to be infeasible. So, um, that's a tension, that's a risk. And the, the, the challenge of an SUP is, is really for the developer, it's just, it's a dollar amount, right? And it's, it's a dollar amount that's, that's based on risk. They're, they're doing design work at risk, um, or they're, they're risking that they get approval for something, but then they're not able to, to make work in the end. Time is a major factor in that too, that, that's a cost. But all of that at the end of the day is cost. And so it's, it's, it's in some respects a weighing on our side of cost and benefit. I would note, you said it's additional cost for the applicant. Also, it is also additional cost for the city.
Right.
Because we have to expend staff time, your bag, your time, your valuable time. Um, so it's, it's not free for the city either. Um, and, um, and, and there's gonna be a certain number of projects that just don't happen. Right, the, the, uh.
We would never know about it.
That we'll never know, right? Um, one of the things that I've seen with SUP processes is that they tend to favor local developers over outside developers. And maybe that's viewed as a good thing, maybe that's viewed as a bad thing. Anytime where you're, you're jiggering with the competition, creating kind of monopoly conditions for one party or another, you're, you're kind of messing with, uh, you know, kind of the, the value the competition brings into the marketplace anyway. Um, so that's, that's just the issue right there. It's just measuring the, the benefit, cost and benefits of providing that. And the benefit, I think you've well-stated many of the benefits that come with it, yeah.
Go ahead. I was just saying, also, uh, just to be a little snide about things, it tends to create a, the market for particularly knowledgeable local attorneys and engineers and folks who know how to negotiate system.
Right, exactly, that's, that's what, that's why it ends up favoring local over outside parties.
A, a question, I don't know if it fully resolves, you know, some of the tensions I feel, but could you have, I don't know, special exception, special use permit light in terms of there's that discretionary, uh, decision based on the use of the building? Because my understanding is some of these areas, you've got by right, office as well as hotel use. Um, I have no idea if it's likely the market responds in that way, but I'm not sure. I mean, does it meet our goals if a corridor became a develop, outside developer bought six lots, consolidated them and build a mix of five and eight-story hotel and office uses? Maybe that would never happen, but to me, that seems contrary to our goal and different to me than if, you know, you've got housing, um, built in that manner. I don't know if that kind of thing is, is feasible or runs into issues.
I mean, that's, that's what a special use permit is meant to be at the end of that, right? It's, it's, it, it's meant to focus primarily on use.
Yeah, and, and it can't focus on the identity of the user.
Right.
So, my name is Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Really, to Councilor Payne's point, so, um, it seems there are, there are two, uh, trains of thought cycling through here. First is the light versus the less light in terms of what's being required. And that's, uh, I think, I think discussion is articulating that. Councilor Payne's point, it really is all about use. So that is the perfect, I shouldn't say perfect, but that is a very, the special use permit is a very useful tool for, um, use considerations like the one.
It occurs to me, one of the discussions we had briefly was about the distinction that this ordinance would set up between a special use permit and a special exception.
Right.
Whereas a special exception would deal with issues of size of the building, form, various things like that, that nowadays we often get wrapped up into an SUP.
We do, and, and what our ordinance says is you can only request those kinds of dimensional exceptions in the context of a special use permit. Um, so, Miss Yamad, ask you to explain that better.
Sure, the, um, the current code allows one who wants to obtain an SUP the opportunity to ask for size changes, um, whether they be setbacks or step backs. Um, and so we've had a number of applicants just apply for the SUP, not necessarily because they want the extra density per se, so they'll take it, um, but because they want less setback.
Hmm. So are we thinking that by distinguishing between special exceptions and special use permits, that we're, what are we gaining by creating that distinction?
Well, by separating those out, someone can just seek the set, the setback change that they were looking for, for example, rather than, than going through the, the process of asking for a use that they aren't actually necessarily seeking. So, and to the point you're kind of making, if we were, if we were to do an SUP for height, note, the, this corridor district refers to special exception because we were focused on height, not use. And we would probably reconstitute that idea as a, as a special exception to allow you to go, go to height as opposed to a special use permit. Thank you.
Well, I mean, that seems fairly, I mean, I guess the, the idea that the, you know, the architects, as it were, of this whole enterprise, one of their main criteria, uh, was that we would get out of the business of having so much, you know, paperwork, for lack of a better word, and people would have a pretty good sense of what they could build by right, uh, just by essentially looking at the, um, the zoning map. But if what's being described, um, particularly with the commercial districts, uh, is a pretty simple, um, bureaucratic artifact, for lack of a better word, where, uh, a special exception, I think you're calling it, to allow a person to go from one height to another, uh, I mean, if this, if the sense from the professional staff is that it's not gonna like totally quash all development, uh, and then this is a reasonable sort of tool to use. And if that helps, you know, with Councilor Payne's concerns about, you know, having, um, businesses, um, displaced, we've, we've spoken a lot about displacement of people and now we're shifting to discussions of displacement of businesses, which is important too. Um, I mean, if that's, if that's a fairly straightforward tool here, I would support doing that.
So there's, there wouldn't, I mean, for, for the purposes of understanding the, um, the, the uncertainty and the cost associated with uncertainty and the time principle, there's really no difference between the SUP and the special exception. And, I mean, notably, I'm sure if, I'm, I'm sure there's a number of local developers who are listening to this and, and probably scrambling to send you guys messages right now. But, um, they would, they would also point out the other uncertainty is in the, in the form of the conditions that might arise. Right, what, what conditions am I gonna get that I, that are gonna blow my pro forma? Um, and, and again, that's one of the things we, we're trying to load, front-load into the ordinance. So in this example, the core neighborhoods overlay district, that's why, rather than just kind of saying, it's a, it's a special exception and we're done, we kind of created these, this list, this menu to try and reduce that degree of uncertainty and make it clear. It's not, we're not, we're not gonna ask for anything, we're asking for one of these things. And then it puts a little bit more predictability into that. It's kind of getting, another way of getting at that light version. The, um.
Guess what I hear you saying, though, James, is there really is no such thing as light?
I mean, you know, I, I'll, I'll.
Not your head, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, a yes. Thank you. Very good. Don't muddy the waters anymore than this.
If I, if I might just add to that, you can, you can set your application requirements differently and, and, you know, require it to be just a little callous, the back of the envelope, uh, type of, uh, schematic or elevation for it, and, and you can leave it at that. What's gonna happen, though, if you're interested in the community's participation and input, is they're gonna start asking for more things. And so if you haven't required them upfront, you then have the developer going back and having to redo plans, redo other things. So that's, that's the other aspect of it, is that either because there are questions that come up or because there has been a community sense as to, we expect to see these things, um, you're likely to get pretty close back to, to the application requirements you have right now.
So my hope may be illusory.
It might practically be illusory. I, I think it's, it's, it's certainly possible to do, and.
And, and it also fits well, again, when you talk about the cost associated with the discussion and review process, it's, it's the rework as well. So it's not just the, 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 the work leading up to making a presentation, but the potential of having to rework that as you're trying to get to that, you're trying to get to yes.
Well, my, my goal is, would be to try to enable people to get to an acceptable yes with less hassle. And, but it may be, if that's just not gonna be able to happen, so be it.
But you still, maybe I'm thinking about it wrong, but to me, the question is, do we greatly reduce discretionary processes in land use? Or do we completely eliminate them for the most practically? I mean, let's assume, and I don't even think this would be the right approach, let's assume you have this discretionary process in every mixed-use corridor. The by right allowance, both in height and density, just in those corridors overall, would be significantly increased in terms of by right allowances, plus all the residential changes in greatly increasing, increasing by right allowances with no discretionary processes. So, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like it's, no matter what, it's a dramatic reduction versus the existing status quo and discretionary processes that councils involve.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the discussion is that, you know, we don't wanna seem like we're just like, we don't wanna make things too difficult. We're developers, they, they, they know how to get around. But I think one of the reasons that we're in this housing crunch and things now is because things have been difficult to get developed here for many years and, 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 and there's been a lack of development, that this is just my summary of what's, has happened. So it's, it's where that balance is, you know? And I think that if we could say, maybe you could do certain things up until this point, but after that, let City Council, the Planning Commission, whether, whatever, review it and, and that way, we still can have some control to, you know, for big projects.
Yeah, and it's, it's relatively rare, but I mean, the Cherry Avenue project does not happen at all if there's not a discretionary decision point.
Well, it happens with this proposal, which is discretionary.
Correct, correct. Um, and the other question is, I mean, do other councillors think and genuinely have no idea, maybe the market just never would respond this way? Would we view it as a successful outcome for our goals if an outside developer bought, you know, five lots and what they developed was five to eight stories hotel and office uses without housing? Which we never really discussed that component of it.
Well, i- in the abstracts, I personally would probably say I, I, I wouldn't welcome that result. But on the other hand, it's also not likely to happen unless there's some significantly different market pressures than what I'm seeing right now. And if that's the case, then maybe things will have changed enough that we all need to be sort of reevaluating what we're thinking.
And can I also say, like, for that to happen, that's, that implies that there's a very strong market for how, for office space in the city, and, and I, I actually, yeah, well, there isn't today, but if that development proposal comes to. to fruition, it means that there is a really strong market for office space, and I actually don't know why we would say no if there is a really strong market for office space.
Yeah.
Cause if there's a really strong market for office space, that means our existing office space is going up and up and up in value, like our residential is today, right? The same rules of supply and demand apply. Um, so that would, that would suggest that we actually really, really need office space if a proposal came in of that scale.
I mean, in my experience with developers of commercial products is they're much, they're even more attuned to the bottom line than residential developers. And they're, they're not gonna make a move unless market looks like it's pretty good for them. I sense things.
So, um, and someone just sent me this, and I hadn't, you know, I remember reading about this in my planning days, about pre-approved plans. Uh, maybe with that speeding up, and, and that gets into question, what you just said, it's like, do we know what best? So it's one of those things like, what market said, you know, is needed, or what we want as this, as the city council is, is, or as a community, um, so, I don't know. Have you, over the past few years, has pre-approved plans been talked about as far as you know, James?
There's a lot, I mean, in the field, there's a ton of conversations happening around pre-approved plans. And it's, so the notion is that you, at least, make sure we're talking about the same thing. Uh, the city or even another party could develop a, a set of standard plans for, say, backyard accessory apartments or duplexes or whatever, and get them pre-approved based on certain, basically all you'd have to do is bring in that plan, make sure it fits within the lot, and otherwise meets under the lot requirements, and then off you go with the building permit.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of conversations happening.
Where you don't need architects, you don't need all, yeah.
And, and it speeds up your review process, cause the, the, the building itself is already pre-permitted, and all you're doing is making sure it fits on the lot.
So, so I guess my question is, has, has there been discussion like the years with the planning commission or the pre- previous council ever talk about anything, or, or it's kind of touchy cert in that we, you know, we are an economist and things like that, we know what we want, but the con, the, the economy, um, may not need what we like, you know, so I don't, I don't know.
The economy may not bear out what we like.
Or you could have things that have a small regional benefit that overall is good, but a specific neighborhood bears extremely high costs.
Anyway, I just, you know, someone mentioned it, I was like, yeah.
I think we, I think we did discuss that with, uh, accessory dwelling units though, but we never acted on it, but we did discuss that there.
Yeah, we got as far as having one meeting on, on the ADU ordinance, and then COVID hit, and then everything went up.
But I mean, it doesn't sound like it was a bad idea, so, I mean, I, I think there's something we can, may, maybe, you know, consider in particular as we, you know, maybe stop, you know, looking at some small neighborhood.
The, the, the specific question that was raised earlier is, I, I guess it would be the question of whether, for example, uh, whether the review process might be easier for, let's say, for the process of going from CX three to CX five, uh, of getting the bonus within CX three. Uh, as opposed to getting the bonus within a CX eight, where you'd be going to ten, ten stories. Or eleven stories, I guess it is. Would it be possible to, to figure out some way to, to make a distinction and to make it easier for folks? If they're, if they're not, I mean, or perhaps to, to make it more, to have more community examination and review of going above five stories.
Yes. In, well, in the form of a discretionary permit or, or in the form of something by right?
Either, I mean, I'm thinking right now, it was within the context of what would it take to get the bonus to go from five to seven stories? Or to go from eight to eleven stories? By the way, we had talked earlier about, uh, at least in the housing context, that going from five to seven stories is not really doing anybody any favors.
That was one of the conclusions of our economist analysis right now, is that, uh, with the cost of concrete and steel, we're, the revenues just aren't there for most projects to, for us to see buildings of that height right now. The exception being student housing, um, because it's a different revenue picture. Um, but largely that's how things look right now.
So it might be the case for commercial as well?
That's my understanding, but I, I think, I, I wanna be careful here, I think the economist was looking primarily at residential, but we've already talked about the market for for office space in the city, it's not, it's not strong enough to support.
Then you got the third hotel market.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the hotel market looks like. We, there's interest in boutique hotels right now, but, but that's not seven stories.
So it's unlikely in the short run that we would see many proposals to go from a CX five from five to seven stories. If we're at CX eight, maybe to go from eight to eleven stories, cause you're already into the concrete and steel construction at eight.
Can I, I want to come back to a, a comment that's made about the participation that this discretionary review processes bring. One of the challenges that's inherent in those processes, that public hearing environment is, is generally at the end of the process. Um, occasionally you have a developer who will engage with the community and do something like Cherry Avenue, but I, I I hesitate to call that something that'll happen on a, on a, of frequency. And so you're talking about engagement at the end of the process, and that's what leads to rework and cost and all that stuff. What we really do try and do is, is, is incorporate, um, to, to, to do it as part of this legislative process, right? So, um, if we're thinking about that line of, of five stories and up, and recognizing that it's not terribly viable right now, maybe one option is that we just cap our zoning at, at that for now and, and come back to higher intensity, higher story districts, and I'm sure planning commissioners who are listening to this aren't thrilled to hear me say it, but I'm just trying to look at options that are available, and one would be to just say, let's look at CX five for now and go to higher story districts later.
Would you roll that out to NX as well or RX as well?
Yeah, just all the higher stories.
What, what would there be lost by still having a special exception process to go of that?
Or you do it that way, right? There's more, more than way to cut this. Maybe, maybe that's the way you do it, you say it's CX five, you can go through a special exception or some sort of discretionary process to get higher than that, and then you, um, then, but then as we go forward, we may look for places where we can remove that discretionary permit to go higher in the future. Based on future planning work.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking this realistically would happen for a long time, probably isn't realistic, but I know ages ago, the idea was everywhere where you have a really major, a small area plan would go before it.
Sure.
Then you, based on that, you go there, but I'm guessing if you're talking about that beyond, you know, the first one, like tenth page, that's not really, uh, that's a long timeline.
But most of the areas we're talking about going eight and ten stories are places that I haven't heard anybody suggesting we should have a small area plan for, like Barracks Road Shopping Center.
Right, or there was, there is one for twenty-nine North that calls for the scale of buildings that we have identified in this plan.
And like those areas, I, I don't know, I mean, you've got confliction with, uh, um, like, I see possible conflicts like uh, Ravenna River Urban Corridor Plan, um, areas like that is where I see the conflict, and I need to narrow down my concerns to what those are, cause I also agree, I mean, you've got, you've got areas like Barracks, you've got areas in the, in the urban ring. Um, we're on multiple dimensions, I'm not seeing those conflicts.
So back to the question of special use permits and if there's something else that we want to do. Okay, let, let's, let's take a, a step back and, and look at the question that was just raised. Would we want to say, let's just, let's just back off going above five stories right now? I mean, we've got the proposal for twelve stories in the Verve Hotel, uh, apartment complex. So we can't say there's no interest in, in height. Um, but there's not, you know, certainly, it's, it's not a lot.
I think to make that change citywide is, is far too dramatic of a response to the concerns I have.
Okay.
So are there areas where, where you, you raised the issue of a, of a discretionary review process? Is that, when you said that, were you thinking citywide or were you thinking specifically areas?
More specific areas than citywide, um, but I mean, I, if I were to list out every single one of those, I wouldn't have the answer.
Would we be saying that the bonuses, every place we're talking about a height bonus, with the special use permit? Or a special exception? I'm just wondering, every place where we're talking about having a, a height bonus, go from five to seven stories, or eight to eleven stories, or ten to thirteen stories, that that added height, would that be a special use permit? Are we calling that a special exception? Or are we, or are we calling it that? Or does it matter?
Under the proposed zoning, those are, those are by right increases in density in exchange for affordable housing. That's, that's how that's structured right now.
Is that the only way, oh, I see, okay. And the only way to get that, that height bonus is to have affordable housing as a, as a part.
Yeah.
And do we allow that in CX as well?
Yep.
Okay.
And NX?
Yep, that's, that's, that is in all the RX, CX, NX, IX. In all of those, uh, there's a bonus height that you're able to achieve in exchange for providing that uh, that affordable dwelling unit at, uh, at a, at a AMI, at fifty percent of AMI, right? So the base requirement is that everybody has to do, without any bonus, is sixty percent of AMI. Ten percent of units is sixty percent of AMI. If you drop down to fifty percent of AMI, that's when you get the bonus.
Also, what, what are we thinking about?
Yeah, I guess my question, Michael, is, could you maybe gesture towards what you think might be possible criteria for a special exception permit? I mean, the notion of, you know, reducing them across the city, you were saying is too extreme. I, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, how do we strike the balance between having, you know, even a, a special use permit that, or special exception permit that is kind of a credible deal that people know what they're getting, sort of signing up to with the sort of specificity of the particular areas that I guess you're concerned about. I don't know if you have any thoughts about, you know, particular areas that you're more concerned of than others?
A very good and fair question, I mean, I, I don't know what the objective criteria is, cause, I mean, my thinking is too much kind of like vibe-based in terms of like areas adjacent to residential areas where you have an existing pattern of kind of like small business ownership and development and the impact there. And if you address that with five stories by right, and above that is a special exception permit, I think that is a framework that seems reasonable. Potentially hotel use is special use permit rather than by right, that's kind of my a response.
Yeah, well, it's a complicated topic, and you did a really good job responding, so thank you, impressed as always. Um, what about the transition zones, the transition planning, does that help? The transition, what do we call them? Transitions, I guess.
Yeah.
Does, does that help with part of what you're concerned about?
I think those are reasonable, my concern is less given the built environment than changes to the economics of investment in those areas. So I'm not really as concerned with. And maybe my concern was, at least in the short term, be unfounded, if you look at, you know, most development of both five stories. Easy to mold, but.
Well, is it something that we could come back to in two years? And if you feel like the risk is not that high, or relatively low, maybe could we, could we see what happens in the next couple of years and tweak it?
Sure, to me, if we see more reasonable to err on the other side and revisiting, but.
Well, I, of course, the reality is that anything we would do right now, if we, we pass it and it took effect, uh, on the first of January, nothing is gonna get built under that for at least two years anyway. If it's gonna be a, a, you know, a five to eight story building. The two years may not be time enough to know, but, but it's certainly something where we can always gauge the response and say, whoa, we better take a different, a different tack.
Yeah, I mean, it just sounds like it's a complicated enough question that I don't know that staff is gonna have time to, to help us, or will have time to you know, lay out even the questions we have for them if we wanna get this done by the end of the year. Not that that is essential, but that's just my read of the schedule.
Uh, so I guess my, personally, I'm sort of backtracking on some of my concerns about this, and I, I, I'm not sure that I have something different that I want to suggest. I don't know, if, if other people are in sort of the same boat, then we can sort of keep moving, keep moving forward.
I just raised one concern as we talked about at the last meeting, if there's a desire to, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a desire to have some form of discretionary permit at five stories and up, we might need to include that in the advertised version of this ordinance now.
I got you.
Otherwise, we may lose the opportunity to discuss.
So, but what you have said is that the bonuses to go from five to seven, to eight to eleven, ten to thirteen, are entirely administrative based upon the provision of affordable housing.
Yes.
So they would not be special use permit issues.
Right, I've written.
Right. And so if we wanted to make it a special use permit issue, even if it was only to be in these corridors, for example, that would be something that would have to get advertised, because that would be a change in the other direction.
Yes, and, and, and I think one of the important aspects of this discussion is to make sure that we are comfortable about whether or not we need to make any changes to the, um, excuse me, the changes to the, yeah, in this discussion.
When does the ad go in?
Um, so we will be sending, uh, materials out, um, mid next week. Um, the mailing has to go through a processor, so, um, we have to do it way ahead of what would be a normal schedule, so.
Look, so there's, that's, that's the date when the materials have to get to the, to the, for the printer for the mailings. So we have to do a citywide mailing again, right? But there's two, so our goal was to publish the draft ordinance to be advertised, that we're, that we're advertising uh, by closing business on Friday of this week, that was our objective. So give everybody a full month to review that draft ordinance before the public hearing in December. Uh, otherwise, if we think about the latest that we need to publish that draft, it has to be published on the day the first ad
It's the twenty-first.
Which is the twenty-first, but that limits the amount of time people have to review it now.
The other possibility is if the only places that we're affecting are, are the parcels that are in these corridors, although it's not nothing, it's a hundred parcels or so, it's not ten thousand. We'd subject for the separate advertisement.
We could.
Or a separate notice, yeah. But if we had a way, if, if we had a thought that we were certain, that we were comfortable with this evening, it could still be put in by Friday. That's what we were, I think, major changes.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I'm the only one confused, but I.
Probably not.
No, I'm, I'm with you.
I thought on the quarters, you already have a permission in there for a special exception permit for increase in elevation. What I thought councillor Payne was talking about was. What I thought Council Pete was talking about was for all commercial buildings to require or potentially require a special exception permit above a certain five stories or whatever, if you wanted additional height, whether it's in the corridor or out of the corridor. There already is a provision separately, that's on the commercial side. The housing side is by right for bonus density if you do affordable housing. So there.
And that's already in there?
Yeah, that's already in there. So what I thought we had narrowed it down to perhaps, maybe I'm wrong, is whether we include a special exception permit requirement for commercial elevations that are higher than five stories. I don't mind missing something.
Did we arrive at that specifically?
No, especially that.
But that was one of the ideas that floated.
Yes, that's the one I, I thought when we were looking at doing advertisement changes, was the one that was most pertinent to including it in the ad if that's a potential consideration, so it's not something new later.
Is that something that other folks on council have any?
Is, I guess the way I think about it, the existing corridor overlay proposal, there's a question of the extent to, how many parcels that applies to, and there could also be a question of what is the base height? Is that something that requires re-advertising? I don't know if that makes sense.
We haven't advertised anything to do with the map, right?
Because we said we weren't.
Because we said we weren't. So in terms of the extent of this district, I mean, we still want to tie it into the purpose of the district, but this could go, this could go to beyond Preston and Cherry if that was, if that was the desire. The, without having to re-advertise.
We do not want to re-advertise. How about that?
Right, understood.
Excuse me?
Again.
Right, 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 that's my meaning.
So, Mr. Freeze, I, I think where perhaps some lawyers are pondering is just to ensure based on this discussion, for example, if there's going to be a change on special exception, special use permit, then that might be something that we would want to incorporate in the ad. Just want to make sure we capture that if that's the will of council.
Yes, I, I think at this point, we, we still need to flesh out if we want to do it like have special, you know, how we review it after, so five level. So let's go ahead and put it in the advertisement. We may not do it, you know, that's, that's what I.
That for any commercial use of five stor, of more than five stories, there would have to be a special use permit?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's one of the suggestions that has been made this evening.
And that's unrelated to whatever use. That's, you had mentioned also hotels versus.
Well, I don't think that would need, would that require re-advertising if you changed the use maestries in any way to what's allowed by right versus special use?
So if we started.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, please, go ahead.
I'm saying if we're starting from any commercial use, over five stories requires a special use permit or whatever, and then we decided to go to just being hotels, for example, that would, that's, that's reducing the intensity, that would not require re-advertising. So if we started from any commercial use and then went back to just hotels, we'd be fine.
So for purposes, and Mr. Mayor, so for purposes of the advertisement, that might be a suggestion, again, to give council maximum flexibility.
Let's do that.
And I wonder whether.
So we can have maximum flexibility.
I wonder whether it would be better rather than to say commercial use to define any CX or NX zone.
Certainly, I was just using the term commercial generally to start.
As I had before.
So can we do that and not have to change our ad?
And if I, if I may, so I, I think to the mayor's suggestion, that would, I think, place us on the, on the solid ground in terms of reducing the risk of, of re-adverse, which would be extraordinarily challenging given the time.
I, I, I think I would, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're saying. So we're saying any use in those districts over five stories?
That's what, that's what I was thinking, and the reason for that was that to say a commercial use, we get into the issue of, well, supposing you've got three stories that are commercial and four stories that are going to be residential, is that a commercial use or a residential use? Let's not have that argument, at least not right now. We may have that argument.
We will.
Two, three months from now, but we don't have to have it now.
Can happen that day.
But not before, that's very helpful.
When Lee is gone.
You know, yeah, after you celebrate my birthday, you can have that.
So that was just in CX and NX related districts.
Is there any RX five or RX seven or eight?
RX five is the height, the RX is RX three, RX five.
Is there a, is there a bonus for RX five to go?
There's a bonus for, there's a two-story bonus on there.
Okay, but at that, at this point, is purely if it's affordable.
If it's providing affordable units at 50% of AMI.
And that's also one that we don't expect to get used in current economic situations.
Current economic situations, that is true.
So yes, CX and NX.
And then there's DX and IX, I don't know how it is.
So I'm going to interpret, DX is a form of NX, so I'm going to incorporate DX into the NX. So then the other one is, is the IX, which is the industrial mixed use, we want, I assume we want to include that as well.
Sure.
Right.
Looks like we bored everybody else.
And just for a matter of process, and this keeps us on track from meeting one advertisement in the coming week or so.
That's our goal.
Yes.
But I'm trying to make sure we're, we're monitoring that.
Yes, we are.
The calendar is rolling ahead.
Yes. And so are we.
I'm hoping so.
No, 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 we are rolling ahead like the calendar. Stay with me on this.
You said?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you good, Mr. Freeze?
I'm good.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we'll, I'm just thinking ahead, will we be in a position to talk about affordable housing and the ADUs and so on next week?
Well, it depends on, on who you want in the room.
You said the RKG person would not be available?
Not be available.
Okay.
Is that a problem?
If you need him.
I don't know that we do. I don't, I don't have, my questions have not, I don't think they implicate.
I don't want that, I'm sorry.
I don't think my questions implicate RKG's analysis.
So the, the topic for.
Maybe it should, but.
Well, so we have the, the question that was raised at the, I believe, the last meeting around the bonus density in the, in the residential districts.
Yes.
And the viability of projects under that. So that's one question you have covered. Then we were also going to do a deeper dive into the ADU ordinance. There's a handful of policy questions that have been raised in the, in the, that are in the planning commission's recommendations, and then some policy questions that we wanted to talk with you all about as well, particularly as it relates to, you know, regular housing versus student housing and how those are treated in the ordinance. So we, we have a handful of policy questions, and, and so Kyle is helping us, Kyle from RKG is helping us with those, with those questions. So that's the only reason, I'm not going to say it's impossible for us to go forward without him, we, we can if we need to.
At one point, we had had the meeting scheduled Thursday. The ninth. Is that better for Kyle or do we know?
We didn't ask because we, I had a different schedule prepared.
Oh, okay. I'd had the ninth on my calendar.
I have not asked him about the ninth.
But could you flip?
So the other, the other alternative is that we had talked about potentially flipping it to the 29th.
And then take the one for the 29th and do it next week. Can't we do that?
But.
But.
But, because I had nothing to do with this, this arose recently, that your clerk has received an inquiry about a joint meeting of the school board. I would ask that you not do that on the same day that you consider any of this stuff.
No.
That's my preference.
Yes.
But that would mean we would have to send that request back to them and let them come up with an alternative and then use the 29th. But I, I, my opinion is that if Kyle is helping us do this work, you probably should have the benefit of him being available in case.
Yeah, and I think we can, so you have two former school board members here, and I think we can make the, yeah, I think we can massage that one, and I think we can make the necessary adjustments to put Kyle on the 29 and put the 29 on the 8 and keep it moving. We have to keep moving.
So we don't know that he's available, so that's one other thing.
But we will text him or call him.
That is the alternative.
We will text him or call him tomorrow morning at 8:00. Just to ask.
On the 20, oh, for the 29th?
For the 29th.
Right.
Okay, so since, Sam, your original draft of things had parking and anything else with Code Studio perhaps involved on the 29th, are we thinking we would then do that on the 8th?
Well, this guy would like you to still have an anything else moment.
At the end, because that's when anything else happens?
Right.
So we are risking that anything else might cause you to be anything later than reasonable, but.
No, it just might be.
If you need it, you need it.
But the meeting might just be, instead of being over at 8, that anything else might be 30, 45 minutes.
It would just depend on what else surfaces. I agree that there might be a need for that moment.
I suspect we'll have enough to talk about in terms of parking.
Because you didn't, you really didn't think it was going to take a long time to talk about parking.
I was, two-hour meeting, I thought we'd do an hour on each, but.
Okay.
There you go.
Well, we will have other opportunities in the next few weeks to fill up that hour.
So I guess then what I'm suggesting is that you would reach out, find out if Kyle is available. If he's not available on the 29th, we proceed without him, and could we just stick with the schedule I was, is that doable? Because if he's not available, he's not available.
Yeah, and if we had questions, you could just send them to him?
Well, if you had question, if we one had and did the conversation as scheduled, any questions that you surface, James, you go back to him and have that for the anything else moment.
So we're covered either way.
Yes, but I still am asking you not to do the school board meeting on the 29th.
We're not. We've already decided.
I think you need to keep your time.
Okay.
We've already decided, we're not. They are important, we love them dearly, but without a zoning ordinance, everything else just.
I think we can find another.
Yes.
Okay, so I will say now what I said at the beginning. Counselors, if you have specific spots on the zoning map that you want to talk about, let's get them to Mr. Freeze so that we can talk about them. As I have complained all along, we didn't do this two years ago and we ought to do it now, and I don't want to say it's a speak now or forever hold your peace kind of moment, but we really ought to have that discussion all at one time.
So if we don't have it.
I guess we'll be looking to have that discussion.
That's what'll be on the 13th regardless.
November 13th.
13 and 29.
All right, let me make sure we've got these.
I had suggested moving things around, including that after the consideration of other issues, but it looks like we're not going to be able to do that.
We might.
So we have the 8th for parking, we have 13th for the map, and then we have the affordable housing plan on the 29th plus other.
I thought the objective was to do the affordable housing.
That would be my preference.
Yes, but we don't know if Kyle can be here, so if Kyle can't be here.
Could Kyle be there on the 13th and we, and we move the deliberation on the zoning map to the 29th?
So Kyle is definitely available on 13th. That's the day I've checked.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Why do we end up here? It's moving, map goes to 29th.
Okay, so let's get the.
Affordable housing on 13th, parking on 8th, that's.
And we can put anything else on the 29th also.
Okay, so, all right, so parking is now on the 8th, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And on the 13th is Kyle.
Yes.
And he got to bring it. And then on the 29th is parking and anything, I mean, and on the 29th is the map and anything else.
Yeah.
All right, tell Kyle to bring it.
At least that's the current plan.
No, he said he can come on the 13th.
I know.
We're not changing the plan.
Yes, ma'am.
There you go. Don't you want to be done?
Very much so.
Okay, we're doing our due diligence to be done.
Brian, any thoughts?
We've been elected.
No, I'm just, sorry I'm not there, it seems like you're having a great time.
We're doing this for you, Brian, we want you to have comedic relief.
I appreciate that.
I love doing this.
No, it's all good, it's good to see everyone.
Okay.
Feel better.
I think we're, we're grinding to a close. Anything else, Mr. Freeze? Mr. Sanders?
All good.
Are you good, Mr. Freeze?
We are adjourned, folks.